Welcome to the Concord and Concord parallel school committee meeting. I'd like to call the Concord parallel school committee meeting to order.
And I'll call the Concord school committee meeting to order.
And we're going to do this by roll call because we have members on Zoom.
Anderson present.
Ruth present.
Marano present.
Randy present.
Patel present.
Rankin present.
Wet present.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Carrie Rankin, who's going to run our budget workshop. And just for anyone that's listening on the agenda, it looks like our public comment period is after the budget workshop. So there'll be a little bit to wait. Okay, Carrie?
Great. So we are going to kick off our second budget workshop. The purpose of this conversation is to really go through what our strategic priorities are. I think we've all said a number of times that a budget is a value statement. So we're hoping to kind of identify what we hope this, the statement of this year's, this next year's, this next fiscal fiscal year's budget will make to our community about our strategic objectives. So we have printouts of the latest strategic plan, printouts of our plan. And we're going to talk, sorry, of our goals for this year. And we're going to talk through what those are initially. And then we'll move to a couple of other more specifics about kind of questions that Bob and the administrative team are grappling with as we get into the final days of budget writing. So first, I think this is really just kind of an open ended conversation. Oh, and I also want to say that given the obvious interest in our later agenda, we're going to try to keep this conversation a little bit shorter than anticipated. And then schedule another budget workshop in December, probably during the day, given how many evening meetings we already have in December. But so probably wrap up by six.
Yeah.
Can we schedule that actual budget meeting tonight or very soon?
Yeah. What do you mean?
Well, I mean, I think it's fine. I think it's fine to revisit values and revisit goals. But I think ultimately that leads to budget and that requires some time. And if we don't have that scheduled, the sooner we have it on the books, the better.
What does that mean?
It means a date.
No, 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 I understand that. What does that leads to budget mean?
It means that the committee would actually talk about the budget that we want to bring forward.
So we have on December 5th, we have the administration is presenting the first draft of the budget. You mean for that?
Well, you referenced a meeting that would be scheduled in order to discuss the actual budget.
This is that we are talking about the budget. We were talking about what.
Okay, I thought we were going to go through underlying values. I thought that was.
Yeah, we're going through values and then we're going through long term fiscal planning and shelter transportation.
Let me try it again. When will this committee discuss the actual budget proposals?
When we see the budget.
Okay, on the fifth and only the fifth?
No, I mean, we have lots of opportunities throughout the year.
I was just suggesting that we get things on on the calendar.
Yeah, so we have the December 5th.
Budget's a big job.
Yeah, yes. We have the December 5th first presentation where we'll hear about the budget. And then after that, we have, I mean, I don't have my.
You have the 19th, but I think what you're suggesting is an additional budget meeting to have be had during the day somewhere between the 5th and the 19th. And that you will get on scheduling that probably tomorrow.
Yeah, if we have values tonight, if we hear a presentation on the 5th.
Well, I think it will be both. I think it'll be a presentation and discussion, but yeah.
Okay, but having no time to digest it, it kind of precludes a deep discussion.
So we'll be, I think Carrie's point was we'll take one more time to do that.
We'll work on the budget.
Okay, well, we will, as I just said, schedule another budget workshop.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think that the tricky thing this year is that we're going to get the FinCom final guideline before our budget goes out.
But our budget is needs based and we need the time to work on it irrespective of the FinCom.
So I have a comment about scheduling as well. We have a hearing where it's not frequent that we get a lot of, excuse me, public comment or involvement, but it's legally stipulated. And I don't think it's a good idea to have the hearing on the last day that we discuss the budget. So we should find another date for the hearing, said the 19th, or have another meeting after the 19th, which I don't think we want to do.
I think historically, we've been, we've done that at least all the years that I've been on.
I know, but I look back and we used to.
Okay.
Before.
Well, we can, we can discuss that.
Or we could add a meeting in between.
I think that's just because the hearing is supposed to be for the public to comment. And if that's the night of our final budget, that doesn't make sense. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, let's not debate that. That's not on the agenda.
Okay, got it. Schedule another meeting, which, uh, schedule another meeting and revisit potentially the community forum. Okay. All right, so moving into a discussion on values. There's been a lot of conversation in previous meetings or about what we want this budget to say and mean. Is it helpful to kind of talk through what people think? Where people are on this? Or is there anything in addition to or that we hope to see from our strategic plan, from our own goals?
I think I have a maybe a question for Lori. And I don't, I think this is a tricky one, but you know, we have a lot of goals. On the one hand, things that we want to see in five years that Carrie and Court, I think, were our ambassadors on the strategic plan. And, and I think this is a hard question and I feel somewhat kind of bad asking it. But in when we have, when we've laid out all these goals, but we're also in an extraordinarily tight fiscal climate. What I think is challenging for you and for this committee is like, how do we figure out how to achieve these goals realistically without increasing the budget? And like, I'd be curious from you how, how you're going to approach that and how you have historically approached it. And I know that's a super hard question and maybe there isn't an answer.
I don't know that it is. The zero based process has us revisiting the entire budget every year. So that allows for us to look at needs and budget where we're trying to make progress as needed. And it also looks at where we don't have things that we need anymore. Or it was a one time cost and we couldn't, those are examples, one time cost we can reduce or enrollments have shifted. And there's some changing we can do there. So it's so iterative that there's often reductions in certain places that help to offset the increases in others. Salaries obviously being the biggest driver of everything. But that is very typical for us that we have actualized reductions as part of the process that then when we bring you the increase, it's, it's already factored in that there's been some offsets to that. So it's not just adding on and adding on. That's actually the biggest point of the zero based process is to be sure we've reviewed absolutely everything one way or the other.
Yeah.
Not just because we're increasing and we have new goals to set.
Okay, do you think that there's an opportunity, just because as we look at this, when you do phase things out, let's say, or needs that were once established have now been met? And we can kind of move on, I guess, from them. Is there, is there any way for you to capture that so that our committee, the finance committee, the public can see those things as they phase out? And so to your point, like, it's not just about things that we're adding. It's about the things that we're, you know, reducing as well, sort of the, that, that kind of thing. Because I think that's hard to capture sometimes.
There's always efforts to capture it. And maybe part of the conversations we have is can be about how effective we're being at it. For, you know, a number of years as we increased in-house special ed programming, we had some significant reductions and out of district tuitions that I think is a, was one of the easier spots to show the reduction because things were changing. Enrollments at the elementary schools where we've had a little bit of decline. We're down a section at Thoreau and Alcott than we were previously in those years. We've tried to bring you that we've reduced, usually it's a K to start with. And then to have the iterative discussion, if we've got changing numbers to say that held or it didn't hold, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess to me, and maybe this is, I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea, but just throwing it out there. Maybe if each year, we can even have a slide that shows these offsets. Like not where, not where we have to, you know, dig around for it. And but like that just clearly kind of plops it into a single slide.
I know we've tried in the past, but let's talk more on how to do it.
Yeah, and again, I'm just throwing things out, but.
Are these not the slides that we've historically called drivers?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand plus, fifty thousand minus, it shows up as a quote un.
Yeah, I guess we do see the reductions as well. Yeah, that's a fair point.
Yeah.
Maybe, okay. Maybe I just got to up my game.
Who else? Tracy, Court, Cynthia?
Well, at this early stage on the budget, I think our priorities have to be student facing investment first, to the extent possible. The most efficient underpinning to that student facing investment that we can. That certainly comes up. I think the student enrollment and student needs drive our personnel costs. And our personnel costs are historically three quarters of the budget, if not more. So where we get to really focus on how our stated values would influence ultimate budget proposals before town meeting is somewhat limited because I think we hold student needs as sacrosanct as we can.
That's important to say, I think, though, and articulate that.
Yeah, I think that that also became especially more clear to me when you were present, you two were presenting the, the numbers without any type of staff monetary increases. And how static, like not static, but how little there is to play with, with all of the other services that we offer.
Right, yeah. And to me, like that, those little 1% increases, I think, are most of what we have to use to accomplish those goals. Because we're talking about programs, services, and I guess, and sometimes they're tied to staff. And that, and those costs are embedded in that salary number, but.
Yeah, I think to make your point, the guideline, the guideline is never enough to cover staff increases off of the contracts. So there's always this real work we're doing.
Yeah.
To offset salaries to allow us to do the other things, which is a big, big part of the goal of the zero based process. And I think what I'm hopeful is in December, we can really bring you, I'd love to do a better job. I think we can do a better job of linking the budget presentation right to the strategic plan and certain goals so that those correlations are a little more clear, obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. And I'm sure that's not easy.
And one thing that we talked about, well, we kind of talked about it last week when we were talking about MCAS and maybe some curriculum changes and pilots that are coming to really, you know, point those out. So if we, if there is an investment in new curriculum, we'll be able to see that. So that's what I'd like to see, any, you know, curriculum needs, which obviously would all be student facing. But to really see that, you know, budget discussions would be great.
And if we could even, you could even go like a step further and say, when we have those investments sort of that are, that are the drive, maybe like to Court's point, like when we see the drivers, if we can demonstrate how they're tied to this explicitly, if they are, you know, this investment and it speaks directly to strategic priority X, goal Y. I think that could be helpful for not just us and our committee, but for the public to understand, you know, and rationalize what we're doing and why. Again, the, all just suggestions.
I know, I share that same goal, especially, yeah, we're, you know, in a new strategic plan. And I think it's a great time to try to do that more blatantly.
Cynthia, anything you want to add?
I think everybody's made great points.
Okay.
The one thing that I was thinking about, and I've seen a couple of other districts, they do an annual progress report. And I think we do have a policy that says we're supposed to do that, actually.
Talked about.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good way to say, this is, has a look back in history. And so it puts all the kinds of things we've been talking about in one place. So it, I could bring you, we used to do it like 10.
You did used to do, and I remember seeing it initially.
And I think it's that we have a policy that says we're supposed to donate a report and more than just the report in the Concord town.
Yeah.
So I think, no, I'm not saying we're going to do that this year or, or next, you know, at the end of the year. It's usually.
Yeah, it's your June thing. Right.
But we dabbled with that, not this past summer, the summer before with the back to school report. And we had a lot of technical glitches and some false starts, so I can certainly come revisit that.
Yes, it's to that point of having to dig for things, you know, having to go find things. And I can't really even find our new long terms to keep the plan.
And that's, right now, we're in the midst of building a new website, so we haven't spent much time on where things are right now. You're, you're right.
But I mean, if we're telling the public to look at these things and they can't find them, we should at least do a.
Yeah, I can band aid that one better.
And are our goals something that's easy to find?
I'm sorry?
Our, our goals, easy to find.
See if they're on the website right now.
And if they're not, we'll put them up.
Yeah, that's. If they're not, but they, they were last year, so I don't know if they've been replaced. I'll check though. I mean, we have them in the drive, but publicly we'll get them forward facing if they're not.
Right. We obviously have all spent a lot of time on the strategic objectives and the strategic plan over the last 18 months. There's eight year. So, and our goals are pretty closely tied to those, as are Dr. Hunter's. Are there anything, is there, so I think we can all safely agree that this is the direction we want the budget to go in. Are there, are there values? I think something that I'm hearing is like transparency and storytelling and things like that, which is not necessarily a value, but it is. It isn't, it is important. So maybe that's something we add on to this is that not, it's not just about the budget, but it's also thinking creatively and proactively about how we want to communicate about the budget. But are there other things outside of what we've already put down on paper as important values that we want to see in this upcoming budget in year?
I guess the other thing I would like to see is just, you know, an update on mental health of, you know, what, kind of what we're spending, what we're doing from that perspective.
Different than what we did a month or so ago, just loop it in.
Just loop it in there, you know, because I do think that that was part of our goals. And our goals are Cynthia on the website, the goals, the practices, protocols, we did link this year. So they are forward facing, which is good. You know, and if you just go through our goals, I think we've been pretty upfront about what our goals are. So I do think, yeah, mental health might just be one other thing to loop in there.
I think it got, I think mental health got a lot of airtime last year in our budget discussion. So I guess, I get that.
Yeah, and I think that they're pretty clearly covered in.
Yeah.
These, and we also have reports for the year that we've already.
I could update that one we did earlier this fall.
Right.
Along with the budget.
Reassuring.
By 25.
Yeah, reassuring the community that we're making the appropriate investments, given that we consider it really paramount.
Yep.
To our students.
I am not looking at Zoom. Can you guys just see it? Carrie, Carrie and Sharon, I don't want to be ignoring you, but if you want to weigh in, please just speak up.
Yeah, interrupt.
Do you guys have anything to add before we move on?
They're both presently muted.
Okay. Okay, just unmute yourselves and speak up if you have something.
I'll watch for them.
Okay. And then, so then, any, is it, can we move on from this conversation? Is anyone anything to add?
I think so.
Okay. So the next piece was long term fiscal planning. Bob and Lori, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
Yeah, and Bob's going to take this and run with it. It's very highly regionally focused because there's moving pieces to the region that are not part of our budget at CPS. So we're actually out of decision. We need your input to know what you want to do, actually. So it's good timing to do this tonight before we're wrapping it up and bringing you a packaged budget. So Bob's got some information to share and sort of questions to pose to you all. Yeah.
So I have hands, but maybe it's easier for me to project on screen.
For Sharon and Carrie, it would be great if you would.
Okay.
We can hand those out still.
One of these each.
Here, I can do that.
Just take one of them.
Want to pass, yeah.
Wait, no, hold on. I'm going to put them as package.
Thank you.
There's a next one.
Okay, so the things that I wanted to highlight, and this kind of came up when I thinking about the amenities building was thought it would be nice to have some funding on hand to support this. So I looked at some of the things that were kind of longer term trends, fixed costs in the short term. And these, these include, actually, I'm looking at the wrong one here. So looking at our debt service, we have, over the long term, I've basically laid out all of our, all of our borrowings here. I've included the recent ban that was approved for the access road. We only need to pay principal next year. But these are all of the things that we are currently borrowing for at the region. And on the far right, the last two columns, you have the total debt service costs. And you have the decrease versus the prior year. And so we could just move forward and realize these reductions in the budget. But I did want you to see, I mean, these are significant year over year. If the amenities bill passes, the warrant passes, that would fit in here likely in 26, might be interest only 27. But over time, this goes from 3.9 million to 2.5 million. That's 1.4 million per year by the end and reductions. When we think about things like the amenities building, think about the high school being 10 years old now. Moving forward, it's going to be older and aging. There's going to be needs that we don't know right now that'll arrive, arise. This presents an opportunity. It could go back in terms of a budget cut would be one approach. Another would be, do we put some of the savings here towards capital stabilization? So you could, you know, one way to look at it would be, what if you took 50% of this and put it to capital stabilization? The savings year over year, you'd be putting in, I'm just going to walk you through an example so you can see how fast it gets to be a big number that you're putting in. But in year one, if you put in 50% of 122,000, 50% of the decrease, that's 60,000 that's going in. That 60,000 is now in the budget in year one. The following year, if you took half of the 280, that's an additional 140,000, you'd be putting 200,000 in. So you can see how it can increase fairly quickly. So, you know, determining what our long term needs are, ultimately, we probably want to do an assessment like we are with the elementary schools. It's probably a little bit early for that with the building's only 10 years old. But this is something that we can make a decision about. We can, you know, look at it different ways. We could put some to capital stabilization, we could put some to savings, we could put all one way or the other. So just wanted to present this as this is what our picture looks like.
You lost me at the beginning. Where's the savings from?
On the far right, so the, the total, it's the second to last columns are total debt service. And it's 3,009,46. When you go to the next year, it drops to 3,824. So the decrease year over year is 122,000.
I have to disagree on that's the savings. That's declining debt service.
Yeah, it's just.
We didn't talk about it as a, you know, we acknowledged the increase as it went up, 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 up. But everybody knew that's the way this thing is going. So now we're going down. I just, I have affirmed disagreement that savings.
Well, that's the discussion we want you to have. Sharing facts for you to give feedback on.
It's a reduction in the budget that the committee has the ability to give some input on what they want to do with it.
Is this going to be presented tonight or no?
No, this is for the school committee.
This is for us to talk about, to talk about.
I just want to confirm they will not be part of it.
Oh, no.
Just checking. I don't know.
It's information we wanted to share. We thought it was kind of important to put out there. And again, you know, you don't, we don't necessarily need to, you know, you have time to absorb it.
So Bob, I find this very helpful. I think we want to be careful not to spend it already on capital stabilization. If I'm correct, we have but a few dollars in that fund.
Less than 10,000.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, exactly. And at some point, would it be a big exercise to run another column with the amenities building at 2.3?
Yeah, I can actually show you that right now.
That'd be great.
That's on this one.
Okay, good. Knows me too well.
So, and, and the way these work, usually when you borrow, you have, you, you would, in this case, you might do a ban first, a bond anticipation note. You could pay only interest for a year or two, and then you're required to start paying down the principal or you could bond once the building is done and you know the final amount. Like sometimes it'll vary a little bit, so you don't want to borrow the full amount. So what I've showed is this time period. You could also line it up. This is 15 years. I think 20 years would be permissible as well. The life of the building would certainly be more than 15 years. So I just use this for illustrative purposes. If it's 20 years, the debt service would be less. Level principal seems to be kind of the popular method of debt service in the town. So I followed that model. And so the interest declines as the principal goes down. You can see the 267,000 payment kind of aligns with in 27, we have a decline of 280,000 in debt service from the previous chart. So if, you know, if we were, if this were to get approved, it might make sense to have an interest only ban payment in year one. And then FY 27, you have this fall in. So the debt service would actually be level year over year. And then the declines would continue after that. So this is, you know, this is one model. And again, you could, you could vary the terms. And if this passes, we can certainly slide it right into the other, into the other sheet. I did have, I have very recent and new information literally from Friday on another long term obligation.
Okay, before we move on from that, do you have a recommendation? Like, how were you thinking about this as far as what to do with that?
Well, I, I would say we, we probably know there's going to be some needs, you know, what level of those needs, you know, what are the level of needs? And I do think it makes sense to put some funding into capital stabilization. What level and how aggressively to do that? I think it would be good to get some feedback on.
So to build up capital savings.
Like, it would be nice, you know, if the amenities building popped up 10 years from now, we wouldn't have to go to the towns to ask for funding if we had anticipated it and set aside some money for it. So there might be some other need down the line. And maybe it's not new things, maybe it's replacing some expensive equipment on the roof, the HVAC units.
Air conditioning, comb seeking in particular, struggle with that.
And in some other states, that's common practice to avoid borrowing and try to front load.
Has it ever been common practice here or?
I mean, we had that little bit taste of it where we had at the end of that one budget in COVID. We had some surplus that we put in capital stabilization, which helped to offset the cost of the paving of the road for that. I don't know of too many other examples, but.
Okay.
That was born of convenience, but it was fortunate.
Yeah, there's ways to opportunist, in that case, opportunistically contribute to it. And, you know, I don't know if we would have been able to do the access road if we didn't have that 200,000. I mean, our bid was well over what we had anticipated, so.
And that's what brought it down to 10,000, to 10,000 is that.
Yes.
Because I remember we tapped in.
We spent virtually everything.
We threw 200,000. It's like 7,000 left. That was just interest over time. You know, and I understand too, that there's, you know, others that might look at like, oh, let's look at a balance. We also want to realize some of the savings because we've had this and maybe the town is going to have some capital needs as well.
And there may be offsets in non-capital that we want to be able to point to.
So as a committee, do we, does that sound right for Bob and Lori to be thinking about this?
Yeah, like, how would that look in a budget? Like, do you know what I mean? Like, what would we see? So I think you're, are you asking our opinion of whether we should start to allocate some money to a stabilization fund? Is that really sort of what we're getting at?
I would welcome feedback on it. Doesn't have to be right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I think this is a good idea. I think it's premature. I think we have to build the base budget first. Then we'll know how much room we have.
But this is a really good flag. Yeah, to think about, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so this is not something we would need to weigh in on yet. We would, we can have, like in our next few meetings, to your point, after we see a base budget, some time to debate that. Just remember it.
Yeah, 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 no. Yeah, it's a good thing to keep in your head. Carrie, before we move on, Carrie and Sharon, I just want to check in.
Oh, yeah.
If you have anything you want to, I see it.
No, it's all good.
Can I just ask, Bob, are you going to put the first screen back up? And if you're not, could you for one second?
Yes, and I can also.
Thank you. It would be good for the town managers of both towns to be aware of this.
Okay.
Both towns probably have the capital needs. You know, I know Concord does.
Yeah, they definitely do.
Right. Okay, Bob, do you want to move on to?
Yeah. All right, so I have.
If you send these to me, I'll just slide it into our packet to these three.
He'll send them to all of you.
All of us.
Okay. The next item is, excuse me, is our OPEB obligation? And before I show it, just a couple of things. There's, they, we've had positive investment results, which I think I reported previously in our year end reporting. We're making an aggressive contribution of five hundred and fifty thousand per year. And I think this is an example of where that aggressiveness is going to lead to a benefit down the road, which I'll show you. There's also some changes in assumptions when, when looking at this last year. I discovered that there was some employees where the benefits are paid by the town of Concord that were allocated a portion to the region. So it's slightly, sorry.
We'll need this on the slide, Bob.
Oh, yeah, I'll pop it up. So there are, and I'll go through this in a second. There are, you know, the assumptions on investment performance based on our investments. The assumptions on healthcare growth rates were looked at as well. So all of these things resulted in a little bit of a decrease in the liability. OPEB audits are done every two years, and then they do a roll forward every third year. So we're going to see changes to what their projections are every couple of years. Not necessarily as significant as this. But what they've done is on their previous model called for us to contribute five hundred and fifty thousand over time. And it was going to decline slightly over a period of fifteen to twenty years. This is their latest update. And what they're projecting, I don't know, I'm going to make it a little bit larger on the screen. Is, why don't I pause for a second? OPEB, for those who don't know, is other post employment benefits, primarily healthcare for retirees. And the concept is that we shouldn't be paying for those out of our, out of our current budget. We should be setting up a trust and money set aside to pay for those, like with the pension system where the money's set aside, pension's fully funded. So the concept is an OPEB trust, which this is funding, that pays for retiree benefits. Right now, we pay in our budget for retiree benefits. In addition, we're making a contribution to fund the OPEB trust. That contribution currently in the FY twenty four budget is five hundred and fifty thousand. The far column on the right is the cash contribution that was, that they're projecting now that we need to make over the next fifteen years to fully fund our OPEB trust. So you can see, we'd be fully funded at this, at these contribution levels by twenty thirty nine. I've gotten separate offhand information suggesting that we could fund at a little bit over four hundred and twenty five thousand and be fully funded in five years. Once we're fully funded, we no longer need to make these contributions. And the trust will fund retiree benefits. So this is another amazing, long term expense that, and you know, a lot of that was done well before I was got, before I was here. And so, you know, the committee and the administration put that in place. But now what it means is that we have these, this five hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution we're making, we don't need to make quite as much. We can decide how fast we want to fund the OPEB trust. It's not required that we fund it. It's recommended.
And what we decide in one year doesn't lock us in for future years.
It does not.
And how can that money, how, how can we use it otherwise? Like, is it, could we put it towards?
You just decide what to budget. So you can say, I don't want to budget five fifty anymore. Maybe we budget four fifty and that one hundred is either a savings or it's redirected or.
We could redirect it. There's no limitations on how we redirect it. It's coming from our general fund, right?
It's part of your job.
Yeah.
So if we had a huge unanticipated need, we could give less. Or if we didn't, we can save it. And to your point, Court, that can change every year.
Yeah. Sort of like a pocket.
What they're asking now is, can we rate it?
We can't, we can't, we can't go to the OPEB trust itself, no.
Once it goes in.
Oh, right. No, we're talking about the annual contribution.
It relieves us of that unknown liability of the known trust.
Right.
Your only discussion is the amount you're going to fund in the operating.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an interest, that's a.
The one warning, because I lived this early on, was we played with that number in rougher years. And you certainly don't want to go under what you know your minimum contributions, you know, because the next year you've got to figure out how to bounce it back up again. So play cautiously and yeah, that's very good news.
And the markets are, you know, they're not predictable. So long term, they typically are, but in the short term, you could see the funding status go up and down. So we were at thirty nine percent funded at the end of FY twenty two, and now we're over fifty percent.
And I think for the larger audience here, it's important to repeat once again. We are in better shape than most districts and municipalities. We've been very assertive about this to our credit. Because it's a liability, whether we're ready for it or not, it's still the same liability. So to be ready for it is pretty sensible.
That's great.
This is one I will say, I mean, I do recommend we decline from five fifty, what, you know, to what extent? Maybe somewhere between the five fifty and three eighty two. And again, we want to see how the whole budget rolls out. That could be an opportunity to put some to capital stabilization. It could be just, well, let's, we want to arrive at a good number. So there's, there's a lot of things that go into that.
So for tonight's purposes, would it be premature to simply pencil in a four twenty five in our working documents and then see how that holds up? We're going to have to put in, we're going to have to put in something on that line.
Yeah, that's a logical starting. For like the, the budget for the fifth.
Right.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got to start somewhere.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yep.
I think that the idea of four twenty five a year for five years, fully funding it is certainly attractive.
It doesn't have that nifty closeout in twenty thirty nine with the high school. Because that's when our high school is paid on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's coincidental. I did just want to clarify one thing, too, is once we budget it in a given year, we can't just say we're not going to make that contribution. It's, it's something that's specifically under the budget. You're supposed to follow it. And so, once we decide to budget it, if we have some unexpected expense in the year, we still need to make the contribution.
Yeah, we've been pretty true to that my whole time. We've been incredibly true to that.
So we're hearing an argument for be aggressive, let's get ahead of this, and an argument for be conservative because we don't want to over invest in this if we, if it gets us caught up somewhere else with unmet needs.
Yeah, I think our goal tonight was to show you where the moving pieces were, where you truly have more choice than sometimes you do, so.
And I think this is really helpful for our committee to have the opportunity to talk about it in public, debate it with each other, offer you advice. I think this is the kind of work that we've been looking forward to doing. So I appreciate the opportunity to have these conversations.
Great.
Forgive me, Bob. You said this, I think, when will this be updated?
Which one?
The OPEB, were we not?
This is, this is the updated, the last one, if you saw the last one, it would have said five fifty in, in two thousand twenty three.
So this is, so it will not be updated again for another year?
They'll do a roll forward next year, but I don't think this changes next year. And then they do a full revaluation for the second year.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on OPEB? Should we move on to shelter transportation?
Sure. So I'm just going to, this was just a specific data request. I just wanted to share it. So I have it on screen. I don't know if you can see that. I'll make it a little bit larger.
I think this will be focused primarily on transportation for students going to school of origin from the emergency shelter. We've talked, and we'll certainly talk again, on the enrolled students and the hundred and four dollars per day that we're receiving for them. This is strictly transportation, following up on one of our other discussions.
So the, the numbers here are, my apologies.
Share your screen.
Oh, I didn't.
No, it's not.
Oh, he did. Why don't I see it?
Because you're not on your Zoom screen.
So my apologies, the numbers are flip flopped here. Concord is the, should be the higher number here. So apologize for that. But so what we are projecting to spend is the last number expended is what we've actually paid out so far is encumbered is we have POs set up for what we anticipate paying over the remainder of the year for students traveling to their school of origin. So for the region, we anticipate spending a little bit over fifty two thousand. And for Concord Public Schools, a little bit over one hundred and forty three thousand. We have had some slight changes with the long rides to other schools has led a couple of families to opt for in district here. And I think a couple of families have found permanent housing, which is great. So I think we had been projecting closer to three hundred at some point in the past. So this is, is a decline.
And just a reminder that we're due to get the first pilot money from the March through June subsidy that was granted by the state sometime in November, last I heard. So that incoming money now, will it be available to help offset some of this outflow that isn't budgeted for? And again, that was pretty significant for us that the state made that change. So we're just grateful for everybody's work on that.
Bob, when you update this slide, can you add those projected revenue numbers, the offset numbers?
Yes, I, I want to see them and verify them.
Okay.
So I just.
Fair enough.
We were on a webinar earlier today and it more went over the grant, but they were going to get kind of follow up information on the.
It is formula driven, however, correct?
It's literally based off of what we.
Shouldn't be ambiguous.
No, yeah.
It's getting pulled right off of the end of year report that we file.
Yeah, okay.
Dollar for dollar.
And, and yeah, so I can update this as well and put it in one packet.
That'd be great.
So those were kind of some things that I just thought we should highlight. And they, the first two tie into capital stabilization as well, just kind of thinking about what our long term needs are, but.
Awesome. Thank you. So I think unless people have other topics to bring up, that is enough for budget. Just in summary, I think where we landed, and tell me if I'm wrong, and I'll follow up with everyone in writing as well. But that we're kind of going with the values and the strategic objectives with the addition of intentional communication around the budget and transparency. And then we'll be adding a couple of budget workshops in the month of December, between December fifth and nineteenth. And revisiting the forum date potentially. And the hearing is set.
Forum or hearing?
It's a hearing. Sorry, sorry, my apologies. We'll be, we will have the hearing. What will you, might we?
I think, don't we have to have the hearing before the warrant?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So the December nineteenth has to be the hearing.
We need to have a meeting after the hearing, though, because we potentially will get input from the public. That's the whole point of the hearing.
So I think it's a, it's a practice discussion. Legally, you don't have to have it on a separate night. You could, in theory, take the, hear, do the hearing first, which is what we did the last year. So do the hearing first, hear the, hear the feedback and then revise the budget during the regular meeting. That's a decision you all need to make as to whether you want to split it up or leave it on the same night.
We'll figure that out.
And just, Carrie, we could add, and it's not urgent before the closing of the, but it is coming. It's a discussion about the budget book or budget, whatever.
Yeah, I wrote that, I wrote that down.
That's on our list.
Wrote that down. Yep.
I would like to come back to this point of hearing and adoption of a budget proposal to bring forward. I think the public, even if they're well served by having both on the same night, may not see it that way. May see a public hearing immediately followed by adoption of a budget as a process that gave the school committee little time to consider, digest, understand and debate what the public brought forward to us in the, in the hearing. So I think we would be, we and the public would be well served by uncoupling those, even though it might be convenient for us.
I don't think it's convenience. I think that the past three years, at least, we've done it on the same night, correct?
Well, I just hope you heard my argument for.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear your argument, but, but that has been our practice.
And it's very convenient. I find it very convenient. I just don't find it in keeping with our values and our stated objective to be transparent and give the public access to what we do around this table.
Still returning to normalcy, you know, it's just like, we were doing things in a very unusual fashion until like really last year, I felt was the first normal year for us.
Well, Carrie, I think you summarized it well, and you and Laurie can work on setting those dates.
Okay.
We'll follow, I'll follow up.
Yep.
All right. So with that, Sharon or Carrie, do you have anything else before we adjourn the region?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Have a great meeting.
Have a great live meeting.
Yes. So with that, I will adjourn. And Concord Public School Committee will stay in session and I will hand the meeting over to Alexa.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Concord School Committee session. We are going to start with public comment, which is normally not my thing, because we normally go to the top of the hour. You always make a statement.
Yes, I will make that statement. And actually, could we put the DC vote on first before public?
Oh, even before public comment? Sure.
Just because there, time is of the essence. The eighth grade Washington DC trip, which is at the bottom of the agenda. I believe that Principal Cameron would like to send out some communication.
Sure.
More time, the better.
So, all right. So before we do public comment, it is, I'm going to move around our agenda and I am going to start with our action item B, which is the vote to approve the Washington DC trip. In our packet, we have, we have all of the itinerary. Laurie, if you want to speak a little bit to the DC trip.
Sure.
Purpose and whatnot, just real quick.
So this is an annual eighth grade trip to Washington DC. So we're proposing this year to go on Monday, June third, return on Friday, June seventh. That is a little longer than last year, but those of you who had eighth graders know you were doing things in the middle of the night, picking children up and dropping them off, and they were getting left in Providence without a bus showing up. And we're going to clean a little of that up, hopefully, and travel during the day. So Monday and Friday of that first week in June. This year's cost is one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars per student. It's a combined cost for hotels, airfare, et cetera. Mr. Cameron has a goal of students being able to raise three hundred dollars of the trip through various fundraising efforts. And I think from there, you've got a very detailed itinerary of all the sites they would visit, the flights they're actually already tentatively booked on, and the name of the hotel in Maryland is that they'll stay out and travel from back and forth during the week.
It's an exceptional trip.
Yeah.
Truly. Questions?
My only question is, is this the same vendor as last year?
No, we really shopped for vendors to get the best price. So he'd been using World, World Strides and their price was not as competitive this year. So this year, we've moved over to Capital Tours.
Right. So can I entertain a motion to approve the Washington DC trip?
So moved.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter and Mr. Cameron. And I know they'll have a fabulous trip and it's exciting. All right. So now we will move to public comment. Tracy always opens our meeting with a beautiful statement. So as chair, I will request, because she always has it in front of her, that she will read it on my behalf.
Our public comment period will be a period of twenty minutes. As a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and you would like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me and you'll be called on to speak. You're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. When called to speak, please state your name and address before you speak. We will go every other, starting with a comment in the room and then taking a comment on Zoom. You'll have a time limit of three minutes. If we do not get you this evening, you can come back to our next meeting or you can submit your comments in writing as all emails will be considered public comment.
Thank you so much. I will call to the microphone a Joe Lauren.
Joe Lauren, one thirty four South Hill Road, here in Concord. My understanding is that there is a proposal in the credit school board to change the name of Concord Middle School. And I'd like to comment on that. I would strongly urge the board to retain the name of. I would strongly urge the board to retain the name of Concord Middle School and not. Consider a change to it. I would say that I think there are myriad reasons. I would say there's four that sort of out of my mind is is. Maybe most important. The first is that the school has a name. Concord Middle School, and I think it's consistent with the naming of our other schools. I think of CCHS, for example. Which, by the way, went through a rebuild and did not. Go through a name change. So that's number one, it's consistent and it already has a name. Number two is that has had that name, I believe, for fifty plus years. And there's been generations of Concord residents and students who've gone through these and know them, these schools and know them as CCHS and CMS. Third, I believe that this will become a divisive issue. And I would guess that most folks would say that right now at this point in the world and in even in our community. We probably don't need one more issue to divide our community, and I believe that this will become divisive. And then the final reason I would mention is that. I think in part because it will be divisive. It's going to take a fair amount of time from this community and from maybe in particular from this board. Time that is probably better spent at this point on other things, student excellence, education. Building of the CCA CMS and the like. So I would strongly urge you to retain the name of Concord Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Mark Martinez.
Hi, Mark Martinez, sixty six Alfred Circle. I grew up in Carlisle. My wife and I have spent last twenty years in Concord. We have three kids, all of whom attended the Concord Public Schools. First, thank you for your time and effort to maintain and improve our public schools. Secondly, thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion. I urge you to vote to retain Concord Middle School name and not to entertain any name change at this time. As Joe mentioned, we live in a time where our fellow neighbors and residents are being divided and polarized. In fact, next Monday. The town select board will propose to enact a new real estate tax exemption. That will shift the entire cost of CMS to the what the the top one third of the assessed homes. Now said another way, based on the select board's own words. CMS will not cost two thirds of our resident a penny. A third will have a significant decrease, a third will substantially stay the same, and a third will bear the burden of it. Now, why do I mention this? I mentioned it because it's an example of a division. A divisive us versus them policy that we face today as a town. However, we're not alone. Washington DC national politicians are preying upon divisive and polarizing policies they have for generations. Even our highest court, the Supreme Court suffers from polarized perspectives and beliefs. What's my point? My point is that we have an opportunity to bring the community together. And to build one unified school. However, part of our community proposes to rename the school as an opportunity to show leadership. Even though a new name. Any name, historic, progressive, right, left, my name. Will, in essence, by definition, be controversial, regardless of who proposes it and why. So I don't think real leadership is stirring up controversy at a time where there's not a need. Talk a second about the CMS name. Elegant, descriptive, I'm going to the middle school. I'm going to the Concord Middle School. I'm going to Concord High School. Most importantly, non controversial. The Concord Middle School references no particular person. It is the absolute example of equity and inclusion. The name doesn't cause any student or any community member to feel uncomfortable or offended. It's possibly the perfect name. We have the perfect name school. One of the primary drivers, the new CMS, is to bring all of our middle school students together on one unified campus. The idea that we would pick a name and allow one group to divide us is exactly the opposite of what we should do. So.
Hey, Mark.
Specifically.
You're done. We were really strict on our time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I'll call Joe Palumbo. Oh, no, I won't. I'm sorry, Joe. I have to go to Zoom. I'm doing this all wrong. Next, I will call Nikki Turpin. If you would, yeah, thank you.
Hi, Nikki Turpin, President of Robin's House. I understand that the conversation is about letting people have a voice. And so it's ironic to me to hear people believe that the conversation is about name changing as a whole. When in fact, we're discussing the possibility of giving Concord residents who pride themselves on being revolutionary. The revolutionary act of being able to be given a voice in a choice that is for their entire town. I am here just asking the committee to let people have that ability, to have that choice, to be able to say how they feel, what they would like to see. Specifically about pertaining to the fact that the town is divided. Brown and black people do not feel like they belong in the school. And that they're other. And recent events prove that time and time again. And Concord has the ability to shine a light on the fact that they are a revolutionary town and that they are looking to be an inclusive community. Concord Festival authors invited Clint Smith to be a keynote speaker, and he discussed the need and necessary needs for us to walk in places where all people are represented. The idea of giving people the voice to do that, but the naming of this new building would allow for that to happen. I'll take, I'll receive the rest of my time.
Ellen Quackenbush, if you could unmute.
Thank you so much for hearing my comments. I strongly support our town naming our middle school. The Ellison Garrison Middle School. Why? It was never named Concord Middle School. I mean, anybody who's had kids in the school system knows it's about PBD versus Sandborne and silly comparisons. CMS, the Concord Middle School name is just, I know, I'm sorry, boring. Instead, we need a name that is inspirational to our children, especially girls and people of color. My child, my child is a girl and a person of color. I mean, that's the essence of learning, connecting to the real people who lived in our town. Please select an inspirational name for our middle school. Naming it just what it is, Concord Middle School is like naming the old North Bridge. That bridge goes over Concord River. Sorry, but. That would not inspire much tourism. Please inspire our kids. Name our school something that is inspirational for them.
Thank you, Ellen. Now I'll call Joe Palumbo.
Thank you. I just want to make that one comment. I did go to Sandmore Middle School. It was Sandmore Middle School. Over the last fifty years, we did have a lot of names for that building. It wasn't conquered. Anyways, I know a lot of my colleagues tonight are going to talk about friends and neighbors will talk about who the name should be. And I'm really speaking tonight about your, the decision that's really before you tonight about. Are we going to let the public be involved in the naming or as you sometimes refer to renaming of the building? So I'm just referring back to Town Policy APP forty three that talks about the naming of town property. Which I think governs how these decisions are going to be made. Because according to that, if for those who've not seen it, it's the town policy that the select board. Is the name of all publicly owned property. This building is a publicly owned property by the Concord, just like PBD, when it's closed down, will be returned to the town because it is a town building. The new middle school is a town owned building. And it says very clearly in this process, the request for naming of any public building. Shall basically fall under the auspices of the board or committee responsible for operating, that's you all. To recommend a series of names or names that you then go give to the select board for a their approval. So my assumption is the way to do that according to this is you would hold a public hearing. So all we're asking tonight, I think that what people are saying is just follow this process, hold an open public hearing that's advertised and properly communicated. And let the folks of the town decide to help you come up with a set of names or a name that you would recommend to the select board for approval. I know that some may mention, well, we're really renaming a building. Just in case you're curious, I'm sure you've looked at this, the town property. Naming system talks about that. It says, if the select board is renaming a property, it should be done sparingly and for good reasons. And if it's named after a person, it goes to town meeting. Well, Concord Middle School is not named after a person. It says, the property is named other than a person. It shall be renamed according to the town naming property process. So now it's going back to APP forty three. But I think most importantly is. The town of Concord has a beautiful relationship with the school. You guys do wonderful work for our children and our families. People appreciate the school system. We support it. At the building of this new school, you came to the citizens and the townsfolk, said, can you help us fund this new school? And I believe the town stepped up and we said, of course, we'll fund this new school. And then when budgets got wonky and I know. Your budgets changed, you needed more money to help finish the building, you came to the town again and the town stood up and said, of course.
Kareem.
What could you?
Mark.
Okay.
When you came to the. Came and say, hey, budgets got funky, we need a little more to finish the building. You came back to the town and asked us and the town said, yes, we'll support you on that. And I know you're going to be asking for more for amenities building this year. Come you come to the town and ask, and I think we're always super helpful. So I think all we're asking now is. We've come forward and supported you. Can you help us be involved in the naming of this beautiful new building?
Alright.
Alright, thank you so much.
Pat Brewer, no one's online. Pat Brewer.
Hi, Pat Brewer. One thirty two Wright Road. Similar to what Joe has said, I have an email from the chair of the board.
Could you speak into the microphone a little better? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me?
Better, thank you.
Sorry. I have an email from the chair of the select board, which was dated November ninth, stating pretty much what Joe just said. Naming of town property is governed by APP forty three, which states in part. Request for naming any public property such as a building shall be considered at an advertised public hearing. I guess my question to you is pretty simple. Why is there even a discussion for a vote on naming it? Isn't it automatically, doesn't public policy to state state that this would be? A public discussion. I really hope it is. Thank you.
Oh, it's me. I'm not used to this. Margaret Schumacher.
Hi, Margaret Schumacher, twenty five Highland Street in Concord.
Oh, goodness.
What she and he said, I I just want, as we approach our two hundred and fiftieth. Celebration for our town, wouldn't it be fun to shake things up a little bit? Anyway, I also want to follow the rule of APP forty, number forty three and. Have a public here, have a public discussion, not even discussion of vote. Because that's the way things should be done transparently. And now's the time. Thank you.
Elizabeth Frank.
Elizabeth Frank, twelve eighty three Elm Street. Yeah, I think the first thing I just wanted to say is I heard some comments tonight talking about. A potential renaming being controversial or divisive or polarizing. And I'm curious about those comments. It makes me wonder if that would be the thought if we were suggesting naming another school after Thoreau. Or after Willard or Ripley. So I'd just like us to, I'm curious and want to be mindful of why does this seem divisive? And is it possibly because this unity we're talking about is often the unity of a majority culture? And this would be naming someone from a minority culture in Concord. The other thing I just wanted to suggest is something I was discussing with a friend as a possible compromise. And I don't know, just to throw this out there, would it be possible to name the school Concord Middle School, but the building, the Ellen Garrison Building? That would be similar to how it's been where the Concord Middle School has been operating at PBD and Sandborne Buildings. Now it would be operating at the Ellen Garrison Building. Possibly that could still. Allow CMS to retain the name and the logo, but would also allow Ellen Garrison Building to honor and preserve the memory of this incredibly. Awesome influential Concord educator and activist that would be for generations to come. Thanks very much.
Kim Frederick.
Hi, I'm Kim Frederick. I live at one sixty six Main Street in Concord. I am the parent of three Concord Public School kids. One, one at the high school, one at Alcott and one who is in the school. And I wanted to encourage the board, first of all, thank you for your service to our town and to our school system. I'm so appreciative of the work that you do. I would love for us to have a conversation about the naming of the building. I think it's a great opportunity for us to, I'm a historian, I teach history. I actually teach and study a lot of Concord history in my job at Concord Academy. And I think we have a lot of amazing and wonderful history that we could celebrate through naming a building. And I think this is a great opportunity to have that conversation and I hope that we will. I also feel like having heard people describe. You know, thank you, gentlemen, to have a good conversation about this, like, let's have a good conversation. I appreciate the helpfulness that went into coming here to talk about this as well from people who are objecting. But like, this is, this is, this is our public process. This is how good decisions get made. So like, let's do this. Let's do this as a town. Let's make a good decision together. Thanks.
Elizabeth Cobb. And this will be our last public comment of the night.
Hi, good evening. Elizabeth Cobb, thirty one Pondu Lane. Can you hear me alright? A little louder, okay. So thirty one Pondu Lane, and again, I also would like to thank you all for your service. I think the community here in Concord is very active. And so many people are caring about what's going on and the work that you're doing is the epitome of that. You're caring and really working on behalf of the families, the community and the children in the school system. So there are two points I want to make. I I do want to point out the term divisive. Divisive and and taking ownership of that term. Confuses things a bit because when divisiveness means that there are two sides that don't agree. And so claiming that the other side is the divisive part is claiming ownership of the neutral point. And I don't see that, that when you're talking about community dialogue and community interests. It's so important to hear all the voices. And I think that, you know, the 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 rules that were cited and so forth. Can help us to develop the right kind of community dialogue that will allow divisiveness not to rule. But to have that community conversation that's so important. And the second point I wanted to make is that we here, all of us as community members, as members of the school committee. We're just stewards of something that will go and live far beyond us here in Concord. And we're coming up, there was mentioned the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I think that's such an exciting time for the town, but it's one point. And a hundred years from now, two hundred years from now, hopefully we'll have new schools again by then, but we will certainly have a community that. Has continued to overcome any divisiveness. And to unify and become the kind of community that we all would love to be a part of and be proud to be a part of. And as stewards now, we have the opportunity to set that pace for the the coming years. So I'd like you to consider those points. Thank you very much.
Right, for anyone that wasn't able to speak, and there were some. Again, Tracy mentioned if you can either come to our next meeting or pop us an email. We've received many. It is very helpful. Thank you all. So now. Before we even debate or discuss anything, I am going to share with the community. I'm essentially to the members of our committee going to read from our agenda overview because. In the last five days, Superintendent Hunter and I have been spending a lot of time together. I would argue too much. In trying to ensure that we in fact get.
See, can I just have a point of order? Our agenda said we are going to vote tonight. Is that still the case?
Probably, no, there's nothing to vote on.
I just wanted people.
Oh, sure. They'll understand that in a second. So. Just so that people understand what has been going on in the last five days. So I'm just going to kind of read this. So that it is timely and succinct. So again, Super and I tended and I have spent an extraordinary amount of time in the last five days ensuring that all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. As we embark on this important task of whether to rename the Concord Middle School. We have, the school committee employs an attorney. We have. Um, we have, we asked her for a formal legal analysis of our situation. And, um, the school committee has seen her legal analysis and I'll, I'll speak to some of it here as well. But, um, I first wanted to start off with some history. So for those of you who attended our meeting last week, you'll know that there was, there was a little bit of confusion about our policy. Our policy is named FF and it's called the facilities naming policy. Um, I think, and I did do this exercise, I think all but three, um, municipal districts, school districts in the state, um, have a policy FF. Um, as noted in last week's meeting, we were uncertain, um, as to whether Concord Public School had a policy at all because in our, um, in our policy handbook, it just, the policy mentions only the Concord Carlisle Regional High School. So because of this uncertainty, we examined the minutes from just September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, um, when this policy was adopted and found that both the region and Concord Public School voted on policy FF. So we were like, great, problem solved. This, this policy applies to both. Um, however, something still didn't sit right with me mostly because um, all of our agendas are available for the public. And when I, when we would click on the link to policy FF in the agenda, as many of you know who look at our agendas, all of our like attachments of things that we vote on and whatnot are all linked to to our agenda. It kept going to a dead link. So I'd click on it. Okay, let's read what policy FF was. What did they vote on? It didn't take me anywhere. Um, and then I, we also noticed that the agenda referenced some attachments, but there were no attachments to the agenda either. Um, so because the link was broken, but attachments were referenced, we tasked Dr. Hunter with, um, heading into like our paper archives to see if we could find.
We're actually electronic.
Oh, they were. Okay, okay. I was thinking like I was picturing like cardboard boxes. Okay. So she did head into some archives to try to find the attachments. She finally found them on yesterday morning around at eleven noon, close to that. Um, so when we, and so before I even get to that, so we also noticed that policy FF was discussed in several meetings in two thousand and fifteen. It was discussed in June eleventh in the policy subcommittee. It was discussed June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen in a joint meeting, um, August twenty-fifth in a joint meeting. And they also kept referencing this other subcommittee called the facilities, um, naming subcommittee. Now unfortunately, those minutes from their meetings were never actually approved. So they, there are no public records of those meetings. However, Dr. Hunter again found them for us. The school committee has seen those, um, minutes and now they, I guess are public documents because we're debating them. So even though that this facilities, um, naming committee didn't, you know, approve them, um, they will be public now. So, um, so again, so then we enter search for attachments, we finally find the document that we think is the policy that the school committee voted on due to the, the title of that document. Um, so we, but we can't link to it because it was never uploaded to our online policy manuals. It was never given to the MASC. It was never really made public. Um, on a sidebar, I also spoke today for an hour. This is not in my memo because I spoke today at about two o'clock, um, to the school committee member Wally Johnson, who is referenced often in these minutes. Um, he has no recollection of this policy and, and what you're about to hear. So he wasn't particularly helpful, but we had a lovely conversation. Um, so the key takeaway from this policy is that the school committee does defer to policy APP forty-three, um, which I think is, is very different, you know, than, than what we had originally thought. So again, we found the unapproved draft minutes from the facility's subcommittee meeting. The subcommittee recommended a regional policy for FF and it did differ, um, from what they recommended for CPS. They are different. Um, again, in all, in these minutes, we only find one reference, um, from Mr. Johnson regarding deferring to town policy APP forty-three. And unfortunately, those minutes were real skim. There wasn't any reference to discussion or, um, or much of anything. So we don't really know what, what, what their mindset was. And like I said, um, Mr. Johnson was kind enough to speak to me today and it was a long time ago.
The only thing I'd add is clearly there were regional decisions to be made. So clearly that committee was focused on the.
Yes, and yes, and that, that facilities naming committee, um, did recommend this. So the, recommend this CPS policy. They recommended both policies. It came out of there. And again, we don't really have minutes. And their primary charge was to talk about, um, the fields at CCHS, um, that were not going to be funded in the, uh, middle school, uh, sorry, the CCHS construction. Um, so, and again, I just want to make sure that the public understands. We assume that the fact that this was simply an oversight on the part of the previous superintendent's administrative assistant, that the policy was never made public. It's not on our website and it's not available to the MASC. We don't believe that there was any malicious intent on that. We just want to make sure that.
I think she thought she did.
Yeah, sure.
Now it makes sense the way it's posted.
Yeah. So, you know, this was not, you know, we're not going to cast, um, blame on anyone from the past. Um, so in light of that, um, we've also had several conversations with our attorney who did offer some legal analysis. And I, I think the most relevant, um, thing for us to discuss is, um, when you look at, uh, sort of hierarchy of legal structure, um, you have mass general law at the top. That's going to, it's going to overrule kind of anything, um, you know, we, that a, a policy made by a school board, um, is going to do. So in the case of mass general law, it's very clear that in chapter seventy-one sixty-eight, the authority to name school buildings is, is with the school committee. Next, in the sort of legal hierarchy of things is the charter of the town of Concord. The charter of the town of Concord is in alignment with mass general law. It gives the authority to name schools specifically with the school committee. Next, in the legal authority of things are bylaws adopted, adopted by the legislative body. Um, there are none in this case. And then finally, at the bottom of this, um, hierarchy are the policies adopted by town boards, like the, the, um, select board or the school committee. So what I want to talk with our committee tonight is, um, what do we do sort of moving forward? Because we have a policy that contradicts mass general law. It has the, it has a, it has a, we're in a policy that contradicts our town charter. And, um, I also included for everybody the mass, the MASC, which is the Massachusetts, um, Association of School Committees. We, uh, who recommend policy for adoption. Um, it also contradicts their policy, their recommended policy on facilities naming. Um, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees also hosts online. Um, I don't even know, over a hundred school districts that, and, and so you can see, you know, what is Lexington's policy? What is Somerville's policy? Um, and I did an exhaustive search yesterday. Um, there is no other committee in the state of Massachusetts that delegates their authority. We would, we are the only one. Again, there are three communities that have no policy FF. Um, and there is one community that decided that the naming of schools was altogether inappropriate. So they renamed their FF policy dedication policy and decided that naming buildings after people was inappropriate, but dedicating buildings to them was appropriate. So that's our history lesson for today. Um, so I opened it up to the school committee to sort of talk about how we move forward. So that's why there's no vote tonight because I think we need to figure out sort of where we are and what we do.
Six months ago, this school committee started to hear occasional recommendations about the name of the new, new middle school. I refer to it as a new middle school simply because we brought forward a proposal for a new middle school. Although I know there's been subsequent debates about whether in fact we renovated a middle school. The building committee hasn't entertained naming. Uh, it understands that, uh, that's not in their, their wheelhouse. We've heard, I think, sensible arguments for not tying up the school board or the town extensively on this question. And yet I see your efforts clearly as, uh, tying us up on this issue. Um, independently going to the school attorney, not going to town council as you agreed to, spending so many days of extraordinary effort with the superintendent. It is in fact now distracting us. Still don't understand why. Still don't think it has to. Uh, there is AP forty-three. It's pretty unambiguous. Chair of the select board has confirmed the fact that he considers it unambiguous. I think his colleagues would as well. Our naming policy is a regional policy. It has stood for years, unchallenged, uncontested. And always was obvious to people that, uh, the region is a separate political sub entity and wouldn't be subject to the select board's policies. I think the very fact that in the last week now that we have seen two camps emerge and we may see third and fourth camps emerge about advocacy for certain names or advocacy against certain names. I think the very fact that this is becoming divisive, uh, is yet another argument for a public process. Not everybody's going to be happy apparently if we have advocates for X and advocates for Y and advocates for Z. And, uh, ultimately that, uh, has to rest on the shoulders of this school committee and we have to bear the consequences of our decisions. But I think we're going to have a hard time bearing the consequences of those decisions and asking everybody, including minority groups that don't get, uh, their way to support us if they haven't been part of the process. Uh, I strongly believe that if, uh, a, uh, subgroup finds that, uh, a decision doesn't go their way, it goes down a lot easier if they realize they had access to the process itself. So I'll say what I said a week ago, uh, the, the big question I have, and it's rhetorical at this point. I've asked it so many times. I don't expect an answer anymore. Uh, I, I don't know why this, uh, has, has become, uh, such a controversial issue that has to be solved by our, our leadership for us. Uh, it was cut and dry when it started and now it isn't. But I think it can be again. There's a, there's a town policy. There isn't a CPS policy. Let's go forward and do the best job we can and involve the public.
Yeah, and I think court, uh, I should have clarified this at the beginning. We're removing this vote tonight because we.
I know we're not voting on it, but you asked for comments, so.
But can you let me finish?
I figured it was my obligation. No, of course I don't. No, of course I don't.
So we're removing this policy specifically because, or sorry, not this policy.
The vote.
This vote because we don't have an authority to decide tonight. So I think the good news is whether we continue with, I think we have two choices. Do we continue with a policy that contradicts our town charter and mass general law, which is a choice, and the MASC recommended policy? In which case, the result of that would be we would adhere to APP forty-three and, and, and do what it says. So that's option one. Option two would be to revisit our policy to ensure that it's in alignment with all other you know, legal authority. In which case, and, and again, I think we would start with the MASC recommended policy, which also advocates for a public process. So there is no more debate in my mind as to whether or not there's a public process. I think what we need to ascertain is what do we do moving forward? You know, are we comfortable with being the only district in the state with an outlier policy that defers our authority that is also inconsistent with superseding, um, you know, mass general law. Mass general law in the town of Concord charter. I think that's what we need to talk.
Alexa, can we get Concord Town Council opinion on this?
Why do we need it?
Because we're Department of the Town of Concord. So you don't have direct access to that. We would have to come through the select board and town. We do have a policy, Lori, that says we can't access town council's policy. It is, hold on.
I think I, I did discuss this with our attorney.
Yeah, BDG.
Okay, I did discuss this with our attorney and she, she did not recommend that. Um, because, you know, again, I think, uh, what, how many legal opinions do we require before we're satisfied? And also I think, you know, when you, she certainly, we can certainly get a second opinion. I just think I'm finding it to be a little bit disrespectful to our attorney and.
Well, I, I think the you select board is going to get the message and go ask for their.
Well, then, then, and they should.
Yeah, okay.
And they should.
Well, the reason, i- i- if I might send you, the, the reason that we, uh, sought, uh, town council.
Who is the we?
This, uh, two members of the school committee, I believe I supported you last week or you supported me. Um, uh, you unilaterally, to my knowledge, you unilaterally decided on behalf of this school committee that you would engage an attorney.
Which is my prerogative as the chair.
Let me finish, let me finish. We in public session asked for another opinion. I am not worried in the least about hurting our attorney's tender feelings because I know her. Uh, she's perfectly. Let me, let me finish, please. She is perfectly content. I'm confident at getting other legal opinions if in fact this thing is, uh, something that has to be so thoroughly contested.
The reference to tender feelings on an attorney is completely inappropriate. And I do think we have a school attorney that we employ, that we pay for. It is the prerogative of the chair to go, as Alexa did, to go to the school attorney. This is what we pay for. If we seek another opinion, we're going to use town resources to pay for another opinion. We cannot go to town council. That is a select board. I am confident in the school attorney. If we have an issue with the school attorney, then that's another question.
Well, and also too, and I, I just, I want to clarify for everyone, you know, I think, I think that one of my biggest objectives as chair is to ensure that we're doing everything according to best practice within the, the boundaries of the law. Um, you know, I think we go over above and beyond to ensure that we don't want to screw anything up. I mean, we are, we're representing a lot of constituents. To me, it's really important. I have the authority as chair to consult an attorney. So I did. You know, I, I have the authority, as we all do actually, to go to our MASC representatives. I did that with Dorothy Presser, like, hey, am I doing this right? Um, I do that a lot and I think it's important to do that because I want to ensure that this committee is, is abiding by best practice, that we are doing everything properly and correctly. And I'm, I'm surprised at the criticism of that frankly. Um, because I think it's necessary. These are, these are enormous decisions that we can't afford to, you know, for want of a better term, screw up. Um, Carrie, sorry.
Um, I just, I'm sort of surprised by the the contention even with amongst us because it seems like everybody's saying the same thing from my perspective that we ought to have a process and it ought to be one that we all agree to. And there is a lot of uncertainty as to what that process currently is right now. We have one policy from MASC. We have another policy from Minutes. We have so many different outlines of a process. If we can't even get to a point where we're agreeing on how we're going to get to a name, I don't even know how we're going to have a conversation about what that name ought to be. So that's where I am. My opinion is that, um, we have MASC for a reason. I was the policy chair last year. I know you did it before me. And our process is always to look to MS, MASC for guidance and to, for understanding on how best to approach problems. The process by which they recommend naming a new facility or renaming a facility is to have a public process, to have a conversation, allow the public to engage in it and then to vote. I don't, I, I, I feel like that's what we're all saying in that we agree to. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I think that we ought to first address the, the discrepancy and all of this paperwork that we've had to go through and figure out what is our policy? What does the town of Concord want to do in this, in this moment? Hopefully they won't have, no one will have to deal with this again because we're not building a school for a long. Um, but how do we want to address it? And, um, and my opinion is that we should review our FF policy. Take a look at the MASC recommended version and go from there.
Anyone else?
So what would be the timeline for that?
Well, we would need. I would, I, I, you know, it's interesting, our. I would, I, I, you know, it's interesting, our, our regional policy references expediency and, and I understand that. And I think that there's wisdom in that. Um, I think if we were, if we were to do that, um, I would recommend having, um, let's think, um, two Concord meetings, similar to what we're doing now. Um, I know we have meetings on December fifth and December nineteenth. Those could easily be added to that agenda so that we would have essentially like a first read and a second read. Um, at which point, if, if we were to adopt a new policy, let's say, as is our general practice, um, we adopted the MASC recommended policy. At that point, we would move to follow that policy, you know, to the letter, which would involve, as we mentioned, an open process, a public comment period. I don't have it in front of me like Carrie does. Um, and that would likely take place right after the holiday break, the Christmas break. Um,
I mean, in this policy, and of course we would discuss this, but like in this policy, it could happen in a school committee meeting. It doesn't have to be a separate meeting. It just has to be a public process.
Okay, but I think to Cynthia's point, first, we would have to address the policy itself. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so I think-
So could we vote on the nineteenth?
Well, so I think ideally, I mean, we could look at our, we generally like to have a first read and a second read where we vote. Um, I believe we could allocate time in the month of December to do exactly that. Um, I would, I, and I, and again, thinking about, you know, our people's time and, and whatnot, I think we owe it to the community to, to prioritize this. Um, I am willing to do that. Um, I'm willing to put it on the December fifth and nineteenth agendas, a discussion of policy, more if we need time. Um, and kind of, and go from there if that is something that this committee's amenable to.
In, in my two cents, uh, just preparing for this discussion, um, I, I don't think a one meeting hearing uh is appropriate. I think we should have a more broader process.
On the policy itself?
Correct. No, 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 on the naming.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, again, I don't have the MASC policy in front of me. I think, you know, we would figure that out. I think that what, what I was hoping to have a discussion today is, 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 is more about the policy itself.
Gotcha.
Um, yeah, sorry. And, and, and not talking about or what to do with the policy itself, not talking about the details of the policy that I, so separating those two things. That, sorry if that wasn't clear. Thoughts on that? Is, are the December fifth and December nineteenth meetings seemingly a good idea for this committee? I don't think we need a vote on it, but just, you know, general consensus.
We do have that. We're thinking about adding another meeting.
And yeah, and we would have that too. So I mean, we have, we have options and, yeah.
I think we have to address our policy first. Like, we have to clean that up and we have to address that first before we can entertain any type of public process. And I do agree with Carrie, like, I think we all are in agreement. We've had a lot of correspondence, as we know. We have a lot of interest. This is a high interest item. People are highly engaged on it. So we should be completely transparent and, and we do have to clean up the work of prior school committees. That's really what we're doing first before we can address-
Happens all the time.
Somebody's gonna clean yours up in twenty-
What are we doing in twenty?
What are we gonna do?
Yeah, I will remember.
Yeah, working groups or advisory committees because they end.
Yeah.
And then they don't meet again.
Right.
And you don't, they don't approve their minutes.
Right.
I mean, it's all-
No, I know.
Um, not leaving any, uh,
and we all have a, we, Bob and I have to be at the townhouse at seven, so we're all gonna be packing.
So, you know, I so appreciate everybody bearing with me through this um history lesson. But again, I just, it's so important to me to ensure that um, we're doing right by all of our stakeholders. This is, we haven't gotten this much interest in anything since like our mask policy during COVID. So um, you know, again, that is precisely why um we spent so much time or the, um, in the last, you know, five days. And I hope, um, I hope you're all appreciative of that. Um, so if we're all set on this, I will move to adjourn and see you at the townhouse. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thanks.